All right, welcome everybody. Thank you for joining us tonight. It's been a difficult year for all of us, but Camp Fitch, believe it or not, has not shut down. We have been, we've had kids at camp pretty much every week during the year. We've had weekend retreats depending on where we were with the pandemic and what was allowable. And we're starting to see things open up, so we're excited about that. For those of you who read my weekly emails, we have over 1,500 people registered. A really neat thing is that we have more people register for adventure trips than we've had in any previous summer at Camp Fitch. And the numbers are growing, so much so that next week we're going to announce another trip added because our waitlist on a couple of our trips are very long. I'd like to, not chiming in, but we also have Joe Woolnick with us, who is our summer camp director, Tony DiMario, who's the summer camp coordinator. And we foresee more town hall meetings in the weeks to come to help you get ready for this summer as well as answer any questions. So the first thing I want to remind you, if you have any questions, please put those in the chat. They'll probably end up being close to 100 of us, and if we all try to raise our hand or get on, I'll miss a lot of you, but just put them in the chat. For those of you who haven't done a lot of Zooms. But first thing I want to talk about is how do you run a safe summer camp? It all starts with the CDC. The CDC, they not only have, you know, general protocols and guidelines for society and businesses as a whole. Late, late last spring, they created them for summer camps. We looked at them last spring and we decided that we didn't feel comfortable with running summer camp last summer and how late they were released. So we used those and through a good relationship with the Erie County Pennsylvania Health Department, we put about 400 families through here last summer through summer family camping. And what we learned last summer is very much, most of the foundation we're using this summer. It was very successful. The American Camping Association has also gotten together. They have something called their guidelines and the toolkit they provide. And they researched several camps that were open last summer, 90,000 campers with very few positives COVID results. And so using that information, they update monthly what they're going to do. And the other thing we do is pretty much once every two or three weeks, I meet nationally with camp directors around the country. And we do nothing more than just discuss how we're going to make this a safe summer for all of our campers and staff. So a couple of things, just to start with our health service team. Any given summer, we have two to three nurses per week. Sometimes it goes up to four. Almost all of them are from Ohio and they range from family practices to we have nurses that work at the Cleveland Clinic. One of them actually works in the ICU of Rainbow. So we feel very confident with them. They also write our entire health services procedures and so forth. And they will get together from what they've learned over the past year and they will update our summer policies and health service guidelines. And we will follow their lead. This is really important to us. We also have added a new position. It's called the Health and Safety Manager. And the individual we found, it was real serendipitous fortune. She has a PhD and she is working now in a master's in public health. And so what her role will be is to work with the health service team and our program team to make sure that the guidelines and protocols in place are being followed as well as, you know, when new guidelines come out or things that, problems that we hadn't thought about perhaps to get those. So it continues to work smoothly. Now, one of the questions I already had on the chat was, what happens if someone has symptoms? Well, that goes down to our health service protocols. It all starts with pre-camp screening. So Camp Minder, we hope, it looks like they're going to have an app that all of the campers 14 days out will be taking, you know, monitoring their temperatures and symptoms before they come. And if Camp Minder gets this app to work, which I think they will, you'll be able to do it all from your smartphone or computer. And when you arrive at camp, we'll have logs and everyone before the 14 days before they arrive. When you arrive at the facility, we do a temperature check with everyone that comes to our facility right now, as well as all the children will get their temperature checked every day. That'll be part of our protocol. Now, if we do have somebody that has symptoms, whether it's a fever, cold-like symptoms, you know, fatigue, whatever it may be, they go to our health center. If you haven't been to Camp Fitch before, we have four rooms we can isolate in. It's a very nice, modern health center. And that is when our healthcare professionals take over and they make the call. But the first action always is isolation. You know, we need to get that camper and observe those symptoms and you're going to get a phone call. The other thing we talk about is contact tracing. And what that means is when you feel like someone has possible symptoms or something, you reach out and you make a sort of a web of everyone they've interacted with. And we'll talk more about this coming up. But successful camps last summer and successful programs during the school year are about keeping kids in small cohort groups. So I'm going to talk about the ship coming up, but the way we design Camp Fitch, whether it's a retreat comes in or our campus connection right now, or family summer camping is, we don't mix the cohorts. So if there's a positive or a possible positive COVID case in a ship, well, that ship is isolated from everyone else. So we can monitor, monitor the individual that has the symptoms. And then the other campers in that cohort can continue on and because we know exactly who everyone has had contact with. And then depending on whether those symptoms require a test, whether the child needs to leave with, because the symptoms get worse. Once again, that is up to our healthcare professional team. They make those calls. So let's talk about the summer camp design process. So if you all had the chance to join Joe and Tony and I at these national calls, they talk about the three NPIs, which are non-pharmaceutical interventions. And these three listed are the telltale on whether you're going to have difficulty keeping a safe camp or a safe business or anything. You know, the first one is airflow. And I'm not just saying this because I love Camp Fitch, but we are the envy of camps across the country because our cabins don't have windows. We have so much airflow, even the health department looked at it and said, your cabins or cabins are perfect. They just let that air go right through there. So summer family camping, we got everybody out in the cabins and cabins and it worked really well. Social distancing. You'll notice I put 10 feet is greater than six feet. Since day one, when we reopened camp, we made the call not to do six feet, which is the CDC recommendation. We say 10 feet. And the reason mostly is because if you think you're at six feet, you're probably at three or four feet. So at 10 feet, we really know that people are cognizant of keeping that spacing. But if you went into the dining hall right now or see our lines for what our staff eats, you'll see that it's measured at 10 feet. That's really important to us. And then the third one is masks. And so we require masks for everyone when they're inside. And anytime you're within 10 feet of someone else, whether that's inside or what, well, inside you're wearing masks. So that's outside, which means you think about how much a camp is outside, masks do not have to be worn 24/7 because so much of what we could do and design is to keep that 10-foot distance. And that's really important. And so that is why we go with those numbers, you know? Kids are welcome to wear their masks, but just outside doing activities, if the 10-feet distance is maintained, they don't have to wear those masks, all right? But the key down here in the bottom is at least two NPIs are required at all times. And this goes into when they sleep in the cabins, because they don't have to wear their masks in the cabins when they sleep. But we're maintaining the distance and the airflow is exceptional, okay? And the only other time is when they're dining, and I actually have some, a picture of the dining hall I'll share with you too. So we like to talk about stages. And if you join our ACA meetings, one of the things they talk about is that when, if, if, if the CDC and the health department says, okay, you can relax your distancing or your mask wearing, whatever that may be. It's not like you open up the floodgates and let everyone just run around. You just sort of gradually expand the amount of people that are interacting. So stage one is how we anticipate starting camp in June. We could be pleasantly proven wrong because COVID really wanes, but we are planning as if stage one is how it's going to start. So your child will come and they'll be a part of a ship. Typically, a ship is two cabins or a whole cabin, and that's 14 kids and two counselors. We've taken our capacity down. So it's four kids in each half of the cabin or four kids in a cabin and a counselor. So that's eight campers and two skippers, which is sort of that number of 10 or less or 12 or less that the health department likes. And here's the biggie, no mixing of ships. Does that mean your child will be in an activity never with kids with another ship? No, because you can be at Lake Erie and ships, five ships could be spaced to maintain that 10-feet of distance between ships. You know, you know, we could have a skit night for an age group and space them out far enough on, in the grass that they would be there together, but we're still keeping those cohorts from just mixing. Because once again, it comes down to if you have a possible case, you want that contact tracing only to involve one ship. You know, that's ideally what we're trying to do. Now, here's the incremental stages. And what you have here is stage two, we get a couple of ships going. Stage three, maybe an age group or fleet. Stage four is normal summer camp, you know? And I don't foresee that happening this summer. I'm not going to say it's never going to happen, but you never know, all right? But we're going to start at stage one and we'll see how the summer goes. So here, I took a picture of a cabin. And what I want to show you is imagine these white papers are the heads of the kids actually staying. Here's your counselor, head's here. This, this camper is on the bottom, his head is over here or heads, or heads there. This one, the head is here, so that's about six, seven feet from the counselor. Here we have a camper head down low by the window. And here we have another one up here. And you say, well, why didn't you put it here? It's because this camper is here. We're just trying to create diagonals and create the farthest distance possible between kids. And one camper per bunk, it's always greater than six feet. It's more like 10 to 12 feet. In between heads, in the cabins, it's 15 feet. The CDC, all they say is you just, if the kids are, have to sleep in the same bunker, you just go feet to feet. But we've tried to stagger that even more. And here's a combat, right? So here's the counselor's head, 15 feet away is the camper's head. That's the only case where they're sharing the same area because we have one counselor and four kids. Child's head there, there's another one way down over there. And then this one we put in the middle because it's the farthest distance between these two heads. And then you see the great airflow. You know, there is the question, if it rains, what happens? Well, first of all, the only time they're going to be in their cabins and cabins really this summer is when they're sleeping. If it is though, these are not airtight facilities. And unless it's monsoon, most counselors keep the flaps up because it's just great to be outside. Here's a dining hall. This is from our campus connection, but you can see we've taped it. And there is a huge distance between these for the summer. We'll have four kids at each table and the staff will roam. And then the, so this is a lot like how they're dining at schools. But these four kids will only eat together all week and these four kids. So once again, even within a ship, this is sort of one half the cabin. This is the other half of the cabin. So we're still keeping those kids apart because this is one of those times when masks will not be on. They will also say, um, we're going to push to eat outside a lot. We'll get to that in a second. We talk about, you know, COVID pivots. You know, one of the things we joke about at Camp Fitch is it's not really camping. I mean, it's not that rough, you know? So we took, we actually have a program called Glamping to Camp and get kids from our nice cabins outside, you know, eating maybe a little dirt in their food, eat off a stick, sleep under the stars as these two gentlemen are. And to do that, we've made some adjustments for our trips and everything else. We purchased a bunch of one-person tents. This is why I think our, our adventure trips are really safe because the car ride, you wear masks and we can leave the middle seats open. But besides that, they have their own tent and lots of space. We're going to try to get kids sleeping outside more. As I mentioned, we have a record adventure trip signups, chuck wagon meals. That's when the flatbed trailer comes around and you get to eat right at your cabin. And we do everything prepackaged. So, you know, the counselor just grabs the food for the whole ship and they can sit at a picnic table on their porch and have a nice meal. We're also going to encourage a lot of cookouts. You know, from the ACA, and I actually like it, is the more they're outside, the better. So you'll even see that with our ropes and program, there's going to be almost none inside the, inside the buildings. You know, we have lots of great porches and cover areas at Camp Fitch. So we talk about programs. Well, here's, this is from Campus Connection. It's pretty cool. You get to go to school and for recess, you get to ride a horse. But look at the distance we have between the horses, you know? And this, here we even have them wearing masks as well. And so, you know, once again, a camp is a great situation because you have so much space and 10 feet outside does not seem like that much space. So programs are about space and sanitation. I didn't hit a lot about sanitation on the first slide because surface cleaning is not the high priority anymore with the CDC. It doesn't mean we're not going to sanitize everything a couple of times a day and keep everything really clean and disinfected. But it means we're going to focus more on the space, the masks and the airflow. But with equipment, we do spend a lot of time on sanitation. So as soon as these children are off, things like helmets, we actually have these yellow huge trash cans full of disinfectant. We dip stuff that's too big or has lots of nooks and crannies and we let it dry till the next kid's come along. All these saddles and reins will get sprayed and then left to dry out in the sun. And we talk a lot about hubs at Camp Fitch. So, you know, what we're envisioning in stage one is let's say scooter boys are going to go to the equestrian hub. Well, if that's eight ships, it's not a problem because some could be doing horseback riding. Some could be doing mobile archery. One of the things we learned last summer was, was we have about four or five sets of mobile archery. So you can shoot archery pretty much anywhere in camp. You know, we can take activities to the kids. We have our farm going. We hope to have our heritage barn built this summer. And the barn is going to be set up with paddocks so different ships can work with different sets of animals. And basically we've doubled or tripled up on our supplies. So multiple ships can be doing the same activity at different times. Then of course, there's Lake Erie, lots of space there. You know, and so you wonder, and I know there's some kids watching is, will this be the same as any summer they've had at Camp Fitch? And it's not going to be the same. You know, some things are going to feel a little different. You know, typically on that first night, there's that rush of running down to friend's circle and you're high-fiving, you know, 200 staff members and everybody's screaming and dancing, getting pumped for the week. But we're going to have to distance that, you know? It doesn't mean we're not going to have a tradition like an opening ceremony. It just means it's going to be more spaced. You know, friendship, you're going to still make lots of friends and hang out with your friends. There's times where ships can do activities together, but once again, it's just about keeping the distance. You know, and we've been through a year at school and the beauty of Fitch is there's some times you don't have to wear those masks because you have the airflow and the distance. Whereas in the hallways and so forth, you don't. Achievement, bring your paddles. You know, we're going to do ropes. That's such an important part of Camp Fitch is working your way towards mastery and belonging. And don't give up the ship. We're going to do these things. But what you're going to see is instead of us doing a lot of, don't give up the ship in the dining hall, we're going to move it outside. So once again, you have the airflow and the distance. And then I've also put over here, there's Joe Woolnick's contact information. If you want to write that down, he is the summer camp director. And as we get going, we'll get, he'll get more into the weeds, as will Tony. If you have a child on galley crew, that Tony does that hiring. So, you know, you'll probably have already talked with Tony some. The other thing I want to point out is check out candlelight here. This is from last summer, one of my favorite pictures. We're wearing masks. Everybody got to light a candle. We just spaced it out. And so we did candlelight every week last summer. So we did nine straight candlelights. And we're not going to give on, in our traditions because we feel that there is really no activity we can't run because of COVID. As I say, it's about distance, it's about airflow and it's about masks. And, you know, I've sent out before, but the ACA toolkit really provides a really good understanding if you want to look through it about how we can do this safely. All right, we got lots of great questions here. So let me work my way. Right here, Deb Haynes said, if kids stay over the weekend because attending multiple weeks, can you talk about what kind of supervision there is? So I want to assume she's the first time staying over the weekend, but we call them stowaways because everything's a nautical theme. And on the weekends, we run program like we do during the week. So we let them say goodbye to their friends on Saturday morning. Then right away they meet with, we usually have an age group director that leads it. And then you have the same counselors that have been working during the week. We rotate them through. All of our staff works at least a couple of weekends and they run activity with those kids. And what we envision is, is by age group, that kids that are staying over that are in that group for the weekend, we'll keep them in that group for the next week. You know, once again, it's about keeping down the number of contacts they have. But we run programs all day Saturday, Saturday night and Sunday morning. And a typical full camp, which is about 400 kids a week, we usually have somewhere between 60 and 90 stayovers. I'm stowaways, I would assume be less this year, but that is how we do the stayover program. And then we typically do activities that they don't get to do during the week. So a lot of times we'll do a big creek hike, Peggy Gray trips. You know, we got a nice big wagon, spread kids out on. And sometimes they do activities, sometimes they do a big beach party on the lake because the lake's perfectly calm or something like that. What was the app called again? Camp Minder app. Companion app, I don't want to go into a lot of details here, but it's great. It has facial recognition software, so you can see your kids' pictures. But you'll find more about that coming later. Sounds like you're not requiring an actual COVID test before arriving camp. That is correct as things stand right now. And, and I will always say as things stand right now, because this time last week, there was a travel restriction in Pennsylvania and none of you could come visit us. And they've since lifted that. The ACA, Joe might talk about this in a later town hall, but in there, all their evidence from last summer, the negative testing did not affect breakouts at camps. So it's not recommended. And in fact, a couple of camps, one of them that works specifically with a large hospital said, it was actually made things a little bit worse, just trying to get it all taken care of. So as of right now, we don't foresee requiring those tests, those COVID tests. Oh, good question from Jen. Will your youngest Mackinaw fleet be in cabins instead of cabins this year? No, we're going to keep the Mackinaws inside. And the reason we, we feel comfortable keeping them inside is that Myrtle Lodge, which is pretty darn far from camping, has great screen windows. And they usually, they usually house 24 people on a wing. And in Mackinaws, they'll have four people in it. So we can put the kids like 20 feet apart if, if not. So we feel pretty comfortable with that, keeping them inside the cabins. And that's the main reason the kids, the kids seem to do better inside. But those, those cabins have great airflow. And as I said, they're designed for close to 50 people. And we're going to put eight to 10 total people in the whole place. Sounds like eight. Oh, how would my 16-year-old choose her activities if they are combined to their, I'm guessing they meant confined to their cohort? There's a lot of ways they're going to do that. And it has to do with how the restrictions are. So all of them, the first thing we've talked about is usually like, if you look at our rope catalog, there's like 35 or 40 choices. And most of them will have kids from all different age groups. And a simple way for us to make an adjustment is just to say that these are the galleon ropes. These are the clipper ropes. And it might be the same classes offered in different ones, but the choices are still going to be there. You just won't see the mixing of ages in the choice. And, you know, galleon does get more freedom to choose places, but galleon also is a small number overall. And so those kids could go to different places, knowing that we're going to keep the space between the kids at least 10 feet. So once again, you can have different ships at an activity together, but we're not mixing the kids directly, meaning we're not letting the kids get within 10 feet of each other because that keeps them safer. Is the food requested ahead of time to accommodate hours and vegetarians? Yes, if you, Sherry, if you go in to your Camp in Touch account, you can actually, there's a whole section in there. You can fill in food allergies and stuff and Chef Dave will take great care of you. Suzanne Brooks says that they're going to be water sports. How can you have Camp Fitch without water sports? Absolutely, there's going to be water sports. The pool will be open. We're going to do swim lessons. The rope swing is new and improved. You're not going to believe the rope swimming deck that our volunteers built. We are going to have, you know, everything, we're going to have sailing and stand-up paddle boarding and water skiing and tubing. We did all this with the families all last summer. And actually bodies of water are one of the, one of the places that has the least number of transmissions. It's just, you know, the kids are outside, there's lots of airflow at the pool. You got chlorine, so we're absolutely have all our waterfronts going. Will we still have Beanie Weenie Night? Absolutely, got to have Beanie Weenie Night. It's Camp Fitch, right? So there'll be Beanie Weenie Night, but once again, you know, Camp Fitch loves the big dance party and you can still do a dance party. You just got to spread out a little bit more so everybody's not on top of each other. You know, and that's something you want to think about, like Beanie Weenie Night won't be a buffet because we're not going to do buffet style. So what it would be instead is you got your station or maybe your counselor goes up and gets the food for everybody. So those are the kind of adaptations we make. So it's still camp, we're just spreading people out. Can we bring our own equipment like a bow and arrow? I'm not going to answer that one right now. That one's a good one for Joe and Tony. It depends on the equipment and the activity. Oh, how do you deal with conflicts if the kids in the ships want to do different things? So the beauty of the hubs is, you know, in the old days, like you all went to archery, but now we call the shooting sports hubs and you can do riflery, BBs, Gaga, arts and crafts, archery, creek exploration. So, you know, hubs have all these choices. And so what we do is, and we also have the mobile archery. So let's say, you know, Mary doesn't want to do the hobby farms. She really wanted to go to archery. Well, we got archery up at the hobby farm. So this is something we've sort of changed in the last four years everywhere. Is in the old days, kids could sort of like every hour, just go all over camp and find their spot. Instead, a couple of years ago, we switched to hubs. And that is the idea is there are plenty of choices at hubs and you get to pick different hubs at different times. Will be the pool open? Yes. What will be the protocols around shower bathroom use? So once again, think about So once again, think about that cohort size. And so we're going to have to use a shower. I'm going to talk about the shower houses. Shower houses are going to have to be assigned by cohorts, right? So one whole ship will use the bathroom. They'll have their slot. And then another ship will have a time to use that. So once again, it's about keeping that cohort together. Um, if not, everybody's going to shower. Well, that's why you have two counselors, which we call skippers per ship. Some of the kids can stay back with one of the counselors and the other ones can go use the showers. But again. It is about keeping space between them. We also have lots of wipes and hand gel and stuff like that to get them sanitized in between. Ships. Uh, for active time, will children have to be with their ships in stage one? That is yes. Will siblings in different ships be able to do things together? Well, there's, there's two ways I can answer this question. One way is to say, if they are in the same age group, I would put them in the same ship. If they are in different age groups, I think they could end up being at the same place. But not interacting with each other. Once again, like the two of them going off and doing something together. And that is stage one, and it is just because we want to keep those cohorts separate. But there will be times when there are multiple age groups together. What do you do for bugs and shelters if they're open consistently? Julie has, that's a great question. So. If I really thought about a funny answer, that would be, you know, if my daughter was your counselor and she won't be this summer is. Put your kid in my daughter's tent because she's like a bug magnet. I mean. She looks like a pepperoni pizza. By the end of the summer, they love her so much, but seriously. Bug spray and some parents do buy, uh, not that expensive. They buy bug netting for around where they sleep. But you know, honestly, the bugs are not that bad when you sleep because of the open air. Uh, it, it really cuts down the bugs quite a bit. Plus there are no lights. There's no electricity in the cabins. Which means there's nothing for bugs to get too excited about. But as I said, I would say for every eight kids, especially in the younger ages, you'll see a couple of, you know. Just like what you see like in those old movies, like out of Africa, you know, just netting around the whole sleeping area and bug spray works well. How many kids in the cab, yeah, it's four and a counselor? Uh, Melissa says, how, how are water activities going to work such as jet skiing, swimming, et cetera? You know, it's, it's not as big of an issue because the lake area is so big and the, and the pool area is so big. Just to keep the, we just let less kids go to the pool at a time. And you know, the counselors just keep their kids somewhat in a group. It's, it's once again, it's about, we're not going to have them mixing in those tight circles you'd see in the pool sometimes. Jet skiing, stand up paddle boarding. What we did all summer is we wipe it off between use. Uh, we dip life jackets in the disinfectant and put them out to dry and we just have more than we need to use. So there's a good rotation there. Uh, you know, in Europe. It's a good question about Lake Erie. Lake Erie is a place where your ship could go down and a couple of kids could stand up paddleboard maybe, and a couple of kids could go sailing. As long as we keep the ships separated. So I, but I don't want to get too much in the weeds about that. What are the dimensions under bumps for duffels luggage and bin? If you email me, I can get you those dimensions. A cool thing about our cabins. Is they were designed, and I kid you not, by, uh, former toy engineers from Mattel. And the whole cabin is designed for kids. And the space is designed so like one of those locker, one of those old fashioned camp trunks can slide under there nicely. So there's a lot of room. Uh, but if you email me. Uh, we will get that information. This isn't a question. I'm so happy. Yay. Beanie Weenie Night. Oh, that brings a tear to my eye. My daughter has only ever attended via Camp Corral. Can she expect camp to be run the same as she attended for Camp Corral? Yep. Camp Corral, yeah. Camp Corral last summer. Yeah. Because. We blended the kids in with everyone else. We mixed it all together, but it's the same structure we do for Camp Corral. Will my daughters be able to interact with my, the younger daughter has needed her sister to help her ease from getting, being homesick. You know, what I would say there, and this is from Sherry. You know. What I think about is, once again, if like, first of all. I'll talk about homesick here. That we put about in a typical summer, 3,000 kids through a year. And the only time I ever see kids go home, homesick. Uh, is if a parent says to them, if you start to get homesick, give me a call and I'll bring you home. Otherwise they do really, really well. But you know, if your daughters needed to talk to one another. I could see a situation where asking their skippers. You know, they could go, they could go, you know, they could meet somewhere and sit because once again, if they're outside and they're 10 feet apart. You're not mixing those cohorts. You know, and I want you to think about that. It's not like we're cohorts are never going to see each other. It's just if they're in the same area, we're keeping at least 10 feet apart. All right. As opposed to a typical Beanie Weenie Night where the kids are all mixing and mingling everywhere. Let's see. How do you handle homesick children who are first time campers? That's a great question, Aaron. The number one way is A to make friends and B to keep them busy. And so what you'll see is we use the word intentionality. So right when a child gets to Camp Fitch, so they're greeted, right away they're doing name games and right away. We actually get to look at our course catalog. Believe it or not, we actually have a course catalogs that, so these things called ropes, which are four day classes. Your child gets to pick and they have the list like, I think it's one through four for each one for their choices. And so they're looking through that catalog, but it's about keeping them busy. Keeping them busy and keeping them busy. You know, and we also have a system where like, you know, the counselor works on it and they have a co counselor. So between them, they work on getting that kid to make friends. And, and getting them involved in activities. And then they talk to their age group leader about that, who's that next layer? That checks up on that kid and makes sure that, you know, they're doing well and, and listens to them. That's the biggie is listening. You know, acknowledging, yeah, it's, it's hard being away from home. Yeah, I, I, you, you might miss your parents, but boy, look at all these great things to do. Uh, and as I said. You know, if, if you tell your child. You're going to have a great week. You're going to do this and don't hint that you'd come and get them. Our staff does a really, really great job here. There's just so much to do and so many friends to make. You know, and I, I will say this too. Sometimes it's harder on the parent than the child. And believe me, my daughter who grew up at Camp Fitch. You know, she spent every summer of her life there. When she's in fifth grade, our school district comes here. She's had big old homesick blues, didn't want to go, was scared about going and. It's one of my hardest thing my wife ever did, but she basically got there and said, you're going to have a great time. See you and let her go. And did my, what was my daughter sad a little bit at the beginning? Yeah. But when she came back, it was a great experience. So. You know, trust us on that. You know, kids do great. And. I will say the best thing we do at Camp Fitch is teach perseverance. And perseverance is helping kids understand. That small, a small little might seem like big failures, but small little failures and road bumps. Through working hard and accepting that it's okay to be upset sometimes. And sometimes you feel sad. Sometimes you're disappointed and sometimes you're embarrassed. But by, you know, giving it another try and working on it and patting yourself on your back for effort. You develop this perseverance and I think that's probably the best thing we do at Camp Fitch. You know, I, and I tell parents that we're going to, we're going to put your kid, your child in a situation. Uh, that's going to, it's going to create some, some tension, some uneasiness. But when we get them through it, they come out stronger on the other side. And that's a great question, by the way. About homesickness, Aaron, you know, to talk to Joe, to talk to Tony. Uh, Steve Del Causel, who's our boys camp director and Aaron Gibbons, who is girls camp. Those two have been with us a long time and they are. True, true professionals in this. And you know, they gladly talk to you about that as well. In fact, Steve, one of the most beautiful pictures we have at Camp Fitch is Steve talking to a homesick child from about 10 years ago. And I mean, Steve's just so phenomenal, getting kids to get through it and then have a great time. Aaron's so talented as well. Are you still going to have polar bear? Oh yeah. I mean, nothing brings more joy to a counselor's heart than watching a child, you know, get up on a cold morning and jump into a pool. So. Got to have polar bear. And we're going to jump into the lake in April, if you want to join us. It's a lot of fun. Melissa. As I answered that question, siblings in the same age group, but they're in different genders. Are they going to be in the same ship? No, ships are set by where you sleep. Uh, and if you came to our camp, the cabins actually have two wings. On a center area, and then the cabins, there's like, like it'd be 14 port and 14 starboard. And they're the same gender and they're the same age. Are Clipper Girls in cabins or cabins? They are in cabins. Uh, one of the things we actually talk about. Is do we want to, you know, build cabins for the oldest age group? And when we survey them, they really seemed to not like them. Uh, Clipper Square, especially for the girls is quite unique. There's like 10 of them. And there's wood, there's woods or trees all the way around. And they're mostly just, it's just this big grass area, like a quad. They can get together and, and talk and so forth. What is the plan for bad weather? Yeah, it depends what you mean by bad weather. You know, obviously if, if it's dangerous weather or threatening weather. You know, we, we, we have shelter areas and we have several areas around camp. You know, heavy rains. You know, like archery has a roof, BBs has a roof. We have lots of porch space. You know, we just utilize stuff like that. Uh, you know, things like. You know, with lightning, waterfronts and climbing towers closed down, but any like a light, medium rain, pretty much everything carries on. But you know, for severe weather. You know, we have shelter places for the kids and we can still keep them distanced. Will kids be able to pick their ropes this year? Absolutely. Are ships doing them together? That is to be decided. Uh, depending on the stage. But by doing them together, I don't mean you're all doing the same rope. It could be, you're all in the same area doing different ropes. Uh, and, and I'll let Joe and Tony address that later on, but the choice is going to be there. That's so important with the achievement tracking that we do with those paddles. Are you still going to have free time? Like just staying in our cabins for a little bit? Remember. Yeah, there'll be, there'll be downtimes and stuff like that, especially the cabins have those beautiful porches. Where kids can sit in space and do projects. You know, there's stumps and picnic tables to play cards. That's camp. You know, and if four kids are at a picnic table playing a game of cards. With your masks on, that's pretty darn safe. You know, I don't, we, we do that campus connection. My daughter was so scared her first year. End up staying a second week. Ah, the counselors are fantastic with homesickness. Anita, you may have just gotten yourself a, you know, a $10 gift certificate to the Camp Fitch store for being such a great spokesperson. Yeah, they do. They do a great job. You know, another thing, parents, and I don't want to steal Joe's thunder, but. If your child is worried about it, go onto YouTube and watch the Camp Fitch videos. You know, that so much of homesickness is prepping your child for it. But when they see what they're doing in the videos. Uh, it's quite remarkable. Uh, and if I, that's one of my strongest recommendations is just getting familiar. The other thing is if you want to bring them up to camp before the summer, let us know. You know, we haven't scheduled our open houses yet, but you know, if you just let us know, we'll give you a tour. You know, and sometimes that's great for campers to take a walk around and see what the cabins are like and so forth. Let's see. Is there a way to check on your child during the week? You can, you could emails and say, how is your child going? That's about the extent of it. Uh, you know, if you, you know, if, if your child's. Well, first of all, if your child's homesick. If it's not just a quick fix, we almost always call you. Uh, both our counselors and our age group directors, and then Steve and Aaron are great at picking up the phone and saying, hey, you know. Joey, Joey was sad today. Uh, he missed home and here's what we did. Uh, you know, he's, he's eating his meals and we just wanted to keep you up to date. Uh, you know, so.
Tom, can I just add to that real quick?
Yeah.
So we, through our, our camp. Through our camp minder system, you are able to send your child bunk notes. And so there's, um, little letters that we'll have at their, at their table in the morning. So if you want to send them. Short messages or, or pictures of your dog. Um, that's totally fine. You just enter that into the system and then we print it out at camp. Um, so that's a great way to, to, to keep in touch with what's going on at home.
Yeah, yeah, that, that's really true. Uh, it's a great point, Joe. You know, and, and, but I'm being honest, it's not like we're going to hide your child's homesickness from you. We are going to communicate with you because it's important to us. You know, but putting a child on the phone is, is never works out real well. So you know, that's what we don't like to do, but you know, if your child is homesick, we're going to give you that phone call. Uh, that's real important to us. So. Let's see. Thank you so much. This makes us all feel so excited. Good. Are kids allowed to bring their cell phones and is it recommended? You know, the interesting thing about, well, you know, back when Joe was in swaddling clothes, I think it was. Which it may have been last week, but. No, but when we first, the very first summer, we said, no cell phones. It was awful. It was kids sneaking them in. It was, uh. You know, you know, parents breaking down and so forth, but I'm going to tell you that's something we've seen the last, I, I didn't think we've had problems and like, oh, I can't even think of the last time, but. You actually especially see teenagers thankful they're giving up the phones. We hear things like. I no longer feel like the phone is my master. I no longer feel the pressure, the social pressure of having to respond to texts and check out Instagram or. Or so forth. It, it's great to them and I'll joke with them sometimes in line. I'll say, oh, you know, I know it's going to be a difficult goodbye. Say goodbye to your cell phone. It'll be okay when you see it later, but. Uh, we don't allow cell phones. Uh, kids that travel in, we have kids that fly in. Uh, what we do is we take their cell phones and we lock them in the safe for the week. But I will tell you from outdoor education, which we serve 6,000 kids a year. We've had a couple, I'd say two times where cell phones actually created a huge problem. And that was. Because our cell service is horrible where we are. A kid called. Uh, and the parent tried to call back and the cell service didn't work and the state police showed up at like 11 o'clock at night. Because the parents couldn't get ahold of the kid. Um, but no, we don't allow cell phones. And it is actually. You can't believe how good it is for kids. It's, we hear that again. We actually hear from our teens and I'll, I'll share this with you for those of you who are new. So many camps in America struggle to have any teens. Uh, our last full summer, we averaged about 200 teenagers a week as campers, half of our camp. Uh, and what we hear again and again and again is camp is great because I don't have the pressure of. Doing my sports. I don't have the pressure. When I'm at home, I have all these things I have to do, all these social things. You know, the galleons, 15, 16 year olds. They spend a lot of time laying in hammocks and playing cards. You know, so yeah, it's not really a problem at all. I think it's actually a great thing. Uh, if summer is run similar to family weekends, it's going to be an awesome summer. We felt a hundred percent safe the whole time. Thank you. Can same age, gender siblings? Request to be on separate ships. Yeah, you can request to have kids apart if, if they're supposed to be in the same ship. Absolutely. You know, but like, uh. A good friend of mine, uh, him and his brother were identical twins and their parents requested every year that they'd be separate. Uh, and then the jokers used to switch their clothes and try to switch tents on us all the time, but. It's pretty funny, but no, absolutely. Um, you know, by the way, with homesickness, another great strategy is have, have them find a friend to go to camp with them. You know, that's the best, that's one of the best ways to take on that first time away from home is when your buddy's with you. I always enjoy looking through the pictures that we upload pictures every day. And Gretchen said, how much money is recommended in their spending account? I am not going to give a recommendation because we're actually looking at. Joe, did we formally say we're going to make that change? With the spending accounts?
I think it's officially unofficial.
Yeah. So we're, we're, we're real close to saying we're not going to do spending accounts, uh, just in the sense that. You know, you want to know how much to put in and we got to make a phone call if they're $5 over. you know, you want to know how much to put in and we got to make a phone call if they're $5 over. Instead, we're leaning towards, uh, you just put a dollar amount that you, that you'd want a phone call if they go over. There's actually not much to spend. We don't have fees for many things. Some of the ropes might have five or $10 because you get to take something with you. Like one of our favorites is knitting and deep conversation. Sounds crazy, but it's one of the most popular ropes, but you get like real nice knitting needles. So that's why. Let's see. Is the craft area still going to be open? Absolutely. So we not only we're doing arts and crafts, parts of ropes in the craft shop. At every hub, we usually have a nice bin so kids can do gimp projects while, you know, they're waiting to shoot archery. Or, you know, sometimes they go to a hub and they're like, hey, I just need a break. And it's nice to have gimp there because otherwise you go to the craft shop and sometimes there's a five mile long line because kids want to do camp. How do you prepare meals for kids with some food allergies? That's a great question. So in, in your camp and touch account, you can put in their food allergies and so forth. And Chef Dave looks at that and they do a phenomenal job. Now I will say we are, we are a nut-free facility. Every meal, we have vegan options. We have vegetarian options. I've never, actually I always joke because Chef Dave, uh, and I'm not vegan, but it, his vegan dishes are so good. I'm always like, you know, moving over towards him because he's, he just does a phenomenal job for lots of choices. But I will say gluten-free, egg-free, just put that in there. If your child really, really, really has a diet that you're concerned about, uh, you could, you can reach out to Chef Dave. If you just go to our website under staff, you'll see David English, uh, head of food services and he'll gladly talk with you about it. And we also have one walk-in. It's like a half a walk-in where there are tubs. So if you want to actually send some food with your child in case, you know, that you want to supplement it or you're concerned about that, uh, I'd say in a given week, there's 15, 20 tubs in our walk-in. But Dave's wonderful. Just reach out to him. What will adventure camps look like when the kids are away from camp? That's a great question, Diane. I'm not going to work, Brad is actually going to, Brad Powell, our, our adventure trip coordinator is going to have his own town hall. You can also reach out to him. But I, I think adventure trips, as I said, are, you know, going to be just amazing this summer. But that's a great question, Diane, but just reach out to Brad specifically. And he, he's going to do a town hall for people who are signed up for trips. But the long and short of it is, you know, we're getting an extra vehicle. So we're cutting our vehicle capacity in half. So kids have space. We're buying individual tents. So every child has their own tent. You know, then sanitation, that'll be taken care of and there's lots of distance, but reach out to Brad. How is cohorts going to work with tech focus? That's a great question. Grant, you want to answer that or do you want to do a town hall later on? Grant, Grant, one of our, our directors of that program is there smiling. It's up to you, Grant.
Yeah, I'm, I'm going to quote your line of, uh, at this stage, we don't have an answer on a lot of the operations of how our program is going to be conducted. We are starting those conversations, you know, kind of in the next couple of weeks to figure out with camp, what we have available to us and how we can conduct our program successfully with the same experience that we've, we all have come to know and love. So I don't have an answer for you right now, but we will absolutely have one for you shortly.
Yeah. And that, Jennifer, that's a great question. All of our focus programs, we cut capacity on. And one of the reason is just to ensure that we have enough space. You know, and so once again, it's masks, airflow and distance. So if you look at it, if you look at outriders, we cut the capacity on that farm focus and tech focus and reach out to Grant and Charlie. They're both phenomenal. So they'll keep your kids safe. Let's see here. Are you still able to send snacks for the week? Yes, and I love thin mints. Great question, Sherry. Oh, so here's a great question. We are waitlist, waitlisted. Will more open? I don't have an answer for that right now. You know, one of the things, it, I'm, I'm going to say it depends. I wouldn't give up hope. Because our capacity is less, there are some options we can look at. We're going to look at Joe and I and Hannah will get together at the first of April and take a look at it and we'll do the same thing in May. You know, I'll tell you where the biggest waitlist is, and that's Clipper Girls. And one of the things we thought about in Clipper Girls, just offhand, not promising, but is sometimes Clipper Girls used to expand. There's the square and there's two more cabents by the basketball court. So there's an option there. We can expand. There are also honestly spaces blocked off for different programs. Uh, you know, one of them is, you know, like Beatitude House is this amazing organization in Youngstown that works with first generation immigrant families. Uh, and they send us 20 to 30 kids. So there's spaces blocked for those kids. Uh, we sort of take an estimate of what age groups. So some of those can move around. But you know, don't get discouraged with waitlists. Uh, we're going to do everything we can to get everybody here who wants to be here. You know, if you are waitlisted, what I highly recommend is looking at, at other sessions. If you're a Clipper girl, look at session one and session eight, and you can stay on the waitlist and register for those other weeks. And then when waitlist opens up, you can just cancel in the other week. But we will keep you updated on waitlist. If you also reach out to Hannah, she'll tell you where you are on the waitlist. You know, sometimes you could be number one, two or three, and I'd feel pretty darn good about that. Once you get more than that, it'll just depend. Um, but don't give up hope. Right? Joe and Tony and I are going to do everything we can to work this out. So we feel pretty good about that. Is there any possibility that camp will be canceled and as it was last year? I've been anxiously watching the news about the South American variant and how it affects younger kids. If things got worse, when will we know? So Nina, that's a great question. I actually, well, is there a chance? Well, there's always a chance. Okay. You know, do I, do I feel very, very confident there's going to be summer camp this summer? Yes. And the reason I do is because think about schools. Okay. If you think about schools, you know, what I've read and what the research is showing us, when there's big outbreaks in schools, it's usually like sporting events when the kids all don't have masks or, you know, gatherings that are outside the classroom. And so I feel pretty confident with our airflow and our distance and cutting capacity that we're going to be able to have a safe summer camp. You know, I, I just feel good about that. I will also tell you that, you know, the ACA has research. Last year, they, it was over 90,000 kids. Joe, do you remember the number? I want to say it was less than, it wasn't that many. It was like around 1,200. Was it less than that total positive cases in all the camps? Yeah, it was very low and the ones that did it, didn't wear masks. It was, it was that black and white. You know, if they don't wear masks, they, it gets spread. If they wear masks, they don't see the spread. You know, and things like self-quarantining for 14 days beforehand, it didn't have that big of an effect. Is masks, distance and airflow, you know, so, but Nina, I feel pretty darn positive about it. But you know, as my sister says, who's a physician, viruses are tricky little suckers. But you know, I feel, I feel pretty confident about it. I also feel good about vaccinations. Uh, for example, our full-time staff at Fitch right now, we're all vaccinated because we felt, we had a 1A partnership. I feel like most of our staff will be vaccinated, uh, you know, counselor wise. So I just feel good about that. Jennifer Franks put we is less, we. I don't even know what that means. Do you see that, Grant?
It's a, it's a heart. You have to turn your head to the side.
Oh, oh, we love. Oh, thank you. That's why I need your tech focus expertise. You know, good thing my daughter's not watching. She'd be rolling her eyes at me right now. Yeah, I could encourage Jennifer. I love Grant. I love Grant and Charlie. Grant actually spent a week with us. Was it a week last summer or two weeks, Grant?
It was, it was one week as a camper. I, I was there for a couple of days on my own and then my parents came up to join me for the weekend.
Yeah, but didn't you stay? Yeah, but so Grant, we're like doing programming, Grant sitting out there in Adirondack chair, like, you know, running the world's technology systems.
I did return on the way back and worked from, worked remotely.
Yeah. Uh, let's see. Uh, Aaron Wolf said, I'm sorry if I miss it. What sessions have availability still for Clipper Girls? It's, it's session one and session eight. Session four has a really short waitlist. It's like only one or two girls, as I saw. Josh Schaefer put, okay, boomer Tom. Josh, uh, those parents will know Josh Schaefer will not be allowed on the camp this summer. Of course, we'll allow his lovely wife and children to come, but uh, that, you know, Josh. Uh, Aaron will say, what's a Clipper? So Aaron, what we do, we have age. So first of all, we have this nautical theme and, and each age group is named after a ship. So the Mackinaw's are six and seven year olds. The Sloops are eight, nine and 10 year olds. Schooners are 11 and 12 year olds and Clippers are 13 and 14 year olds. And then galleons are 15, 16. So a Clipper is any, is any camper that's 13 or 14. It's actually by grade level. It's going into eighth or going into ninth, I believe, is a, is a Clipper. We have littles. Uh, here's a, well, oh, I'm, I'm super new. We have littles. That's, that's okay, Aaron. They'll aspire to be Clippers. The Clippers are like, as I said, a typical week, two summers ago, we had 200 Clippers and galleons and it, it was pretty amazing. Jen said, do you have a preference for cloth or disposable masks? I'm thinking of sending a thousand to get them through. That's funny. So, I would, I'm against disposable just because, uh, in, and I'm a hypocrite here because I wear them, but I, I wear mine for like two weeks straight. But just, just because they get left all over the place. I think cloth is good. You know, you can read up on this. It's a couple of fabrics involved. The number we're going to say is at least 10 is how many you should pack. We also have 3,000 sitting in our store right now for extras. And, and Joe is also looking at straps. So when you pull your mask down, it can hang. So it's not all over kingdom come. Oh, open week for littles. There's, there's lots of open weeks for the little kids. Yeah, yeah. For Mackinaw's, everything's open. Schooner and sloop. I don't, there's like barely any waitlists and you'd know, and, and I think those waitlists will disappear because we, we didn't update the capacities on those. But it's pretty much 13, 14 year old girls. And then 15, 16 year old boys and girls have pretty good waitlists across the board. And that's mostly because most of them are returners from last summer. Uh, and they also stay multiple weeks. You know, I think at the last summer we had, it was about 45% of teenagers stay more than one week. Uh, so that's part of the logjam there. Any other questions? It's 808. These are really good questions. Uh, Josh Schaefer was the only one who made fun of me. Grant was far more civil. But you know, as I said before, my name is Tom Parker. Uh, you're welcome to call me. You can call Joe. You can call Tony. Aaron and Steve, Aaron is, and Steve are, are with us in the summer, but they're also with us during the year off and on as well, but they'll gladly talk to you as well. And we have more calls coming. I talked about Brad Powell doing for trips. And we're just, we're so thankful that you have joined us tonight. Uh, we're going to keep your kids safe. Uh, we've done a lot of work on this. Uh, we had a lot of practice with it for the last year. And I feel very confident in what we're doing. Uh, and as I said, come over and see us. You know, that, especially if your child hasn't been here before, it just, it just makes them feel more at home. And I'll leave you, if you haven't been here, nothing beats our chickens and pigs and goats. And we have kids that just go and take a nap on top of our pigs, uh, these Cooney, Cooney pigs. And you know, if you watch more, you know, it's just the farm is this is an amazing thing. And I've yet to meet a child that's upset about being at camp, that if you stick a chicken on their head, doesn't suddenly love camp. So you know, it's a beautiful thing. But thank you so much. Never hesitate to reach out. I have a safe weekend. Uh, and just let us know whatever we can do. Uh, and Josh Schaefer, nice try there. Try to get back on my good side. All right. Godspeed, everybody. Have a wonderful night.